The lives of those who will encounter afterward. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Next item is the roll call and approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Yes, Honorable Plato?
I move that we dispense with the uh, roll of roll.
Upon motion duly seconded, the calling of the roll is dispensed with.
Mister Chair?
Yes, Honorable Marco?
On the item four, I would like to move that we dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting and approve the same.
A second, sir.
Upon motion duly seconded, the reading of the minutes of the previous committee meeting is dispensed with and the same is approved. Good morning, everyone. The Chair would like to recognize the following distinguished House members who are present today with us. Physically present, Honorable Lina Bel Ruth Villarica of Fourth District Bulacan, Honorable Vice Chair Marco of Baguio City, and Honorable Salvador Plato, Vice Chairman also from Sixth District Bulacan. And via Zoom, present today Honorable Adrian J. Alvincola, Honorable Bonifacio Bosita, Honorable Ray Florence Reyes, Honorable J C Abalos, Honorable Jerni Jet Nisay, Honorable Romulo Peña, Honorable Charisse Ann Hernandez, Honorable Florida Robes, Honorable Keith Micah Attorney Mike Tan, Honorable Daphne Lagon, Honorable Maria Carmen Zamora, Honorable Julio Rodriguez, Honorable Evgeny Vicente Imano, Honorable Steve Chongbian Solon. And uh, recognize our guests from uh, different national line agencies.
Good morning, honorable members of the committee. In attendance for today's meeting are resource persons from the following departments and offices. From the Department of Health, Director Anet B. Tan, the Director of the HFASRB. Good morning ma'am. Uh, Doctor Charmaine Rabago, Doctor Ninita Soluta, Attorney Rodel Flores and uh, our Suki, Doctor Melissa Sena. Good morning ma'am. From the Food and Drug Administration, uh, in attendance are Mr. Raymond Sia of the F D R O, uh, Ms. Evangeline Manalo and uh, Attorney Gwain Emil Cabrera from the Department of Environment and Natural Resources, Mister Kim Jiao and Ms. Angelique Pearl Miranda from the Department of Budget and Management. We send invitation your honor to Ms. Jean Cabatana and Ms. Jen Bird Season from the Cotobato Regional and Medical Center, Doctor Ismael Di Marin from the um, Doctor Jose and Rodriguez Memorial Medical Center, Mister Eric John Capito, Ms. Nochelda Castillo, Mister Armando Balleza and Attorney Jeffrey Reyes. That will be all your honor.
Thank you for your presence, our distinguished guest. Distinguished colleagues and esteemed guests, in the agenda of the committee meeting for today are bills which seeks to modernize the regulation of health facilities and services. Repealing for the purpose Republic Act Number 4226, otherwise known as the Hospital Licenseure Act. The committee shall also tackle eleven hospital bills of equal importance. So without further ado, let us immediately proceed with a consideration of the bills. On the bills modernizing the regulation of health facilities and services, for the information of this honorable body, the proposed measure modernizing the regulation of health facilities and services was already extensively deliberated upon on the Committee on Health in the Eighteenth Congress. It was subsequently approved by the House on third reading and was transmitted to the Senate although unfortunately the Senate was not able to consider it. Copies of the matrix of the bills relative thereto have been distributed to all members of this committee. The Chair now would like to recognize our authors. For House Bill uh, 265 by Representative Christian Tel Yap, House Bill 2645 by Representative Lena Bel Ruth Villarica, House Bill 3040, Representative Christopher Son Yap, House Bill 4152, Representative Harris Christopher Ang Chuwan, and House Bill 4242 by Representative Keith Micah Attorney Mike. Also let us recognize the presence via Zoom by Honorable Dante Garcia as well as Honorable Maria Victoria Copilar. The Chairs now recognize the invited resource persons for their comments and recommendations. The author, I'm sorry, the authors now are uh, recognized for their sponsorship uh, speech.
Honorable Villarica? Yes, good morning Chair and good morning to our uh, colleagues in the Committee on Health. Uh, actually my explanatory note will be my sponsorship speech. So as it has been approved already during the Seventeenth and Eighteenth Congress, I think uh, we should, I earnestly uh, request that it be enacted. Thank you.
Let us also hear uh, other authors. Via Zoom. Representative Christopher Son Kokoya. Is uh, Representative Kokoya present? So we may skip to uh, Honorable Representative Keith Micatan.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Uh, good morning to all of us. The COVID-19 pandemic has paved the way for the growth, evolution and expansion of health services that further made Republic Act 4226 or the Hospital Licenseure Act of nineteen sixty-five outdated. The law mandates the regulation of hospitals are the key elements of hospital operations such as safety and quality. Currently, the standards belong to the DOH have health facilities and services Regulatory Bureau, P Experts and the FDA while the hospital licensing is done according to service level, capacity and standard compliance. The HFASRB also regulates various types of health facilities and different blocks and administrative issuances governing health facility regulation. There's an umbrella policy that provides a universal framework of cohesion across the different health policy, facility policies is needed. In this light, House Bill Number 4242 provides the for the updating of critical technical guidelines and infrastructure to enable the DOH to cope with the challenges of globalization and those brought about by the pandemic. The bill proposes to strengthen the regulation of health facilities and services by authorizing the Bureau of Health Facilities and Services of the Department of Health to establish and describe rules, regulations and standards, inspect and monitor for continued compliance, implement a classification system, approve building plans and construction sign, provide advice, collect fees and conduct administrative hearing and impose penalties. The bill seeks to adequately support DOH's role to regulate and delineate roles and responsibilities of various offices, expand the regulatory mandates to be more cohesive, including adopting a framework of cohesion across health facilities, ensure attainment of objectives through stringent application and provision of prescriptive standards, and improve engagement with regulatory sectors. It is hoped that through this measure, the country will be able to institute fairness in cost and equity of access to future deliverables of health regulation. I therefore ask the committee's favorable consideration of this proposal. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Representative Micatan. And uh, for and behalf of Honorable Harris Christopher Ang Chuwan, who has an equally important matters to attend with, at this time, may I request Representative Marco?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mister Chair. Uh, good morning to everybody uh, present. Uh, I would like to move, Mister Chair, that the explanatory note of House Bill 4152 and Act Modernizing the Regulations of Health Facilities and Services and Appropriating Funds Therefore repealing for the purpose Republic Act 4226, otherwise known as the Hospital Licenseure Act, uh, Licenseure Act be adopted as the sponsorship uh, message of uh, Representative Harris Christopher Ang Chuwan. I so move, Mister Chair.
In a second. There's a motion duly seconded. There being no objection, the motion is approved. Also via Zoom, we recognize the presence of uh, Honorable Baby, Baby Eileen Vargas Alfonso. And also at the presence of Honorable Ricardo Cruz, Honorable Ricardo Cruz. So we can call now our source person, particularly from the Department of Health, Director Anet Tan.
Good morning, Mister Chair and to the other honorable congressmen and on this meeting. This is the position for the Department of Health. The Department of Health fully supports the bills which seek to strengthen the Health Facilities and Service Regulation Bureau. The bill seeks to modernize the regulation of health facilities and services, repeal the old Republic Act 4226 or the Hospital Licenseure Act of nineteen sixty-five. The rename of the HFASRB into Bureau of Health Facilities and Services or BHFS. At present, the DOH to the HFASRB regulates nine thousand nine hundred sixty-four health facilities. With the growing demand for outpatient health services, other health facilities such as diagnostic, therapeutic and rehabilitative centers have been established. However, there are no policies regulating these emerging types of health facilities. While its services improve the health and well-being of a specific population group, the Department of Health has no mandate to regulate the quality of health services provided by these facilities. With the enactment of the Republic Act One One Two Two Three or the Universal Healthcare Act, the DOH anticipates licensing and regulation of more than forty thousand primary care facilities during the implementation of the law. However, the Department of Health acknowledges that the current permanent positions in the HFASRB are already inadequate relative to the current number of health facilities and services being regulated. The HFASRB lacks enforcement mechanism and possesses weak regulatory sanctions. Further, the provisions of strengthening health facilities and service regulation at the regional level are appreciated and the DOH stresses the importance of continuing coordination between regulatory bodies, healthcare facilities and providers. However, there is a need to prevent conflicts of interest by insulating regional regulatory offices from healthcare providers, thus maintaining the boundary of regulatory functions and service delivery, ensuring fairness, equity and impartiality of the exercise of the quasi judicial powers. In consideration of the foregoing, the Department fully supports the proposed measures and respectfully endorses its recommendations and other inputs in the form of the enclosed proposed bill for due consideration of the Congress, respectfully submitted. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Anet Tan, for the view as far as DOH is concerned. We recognize next from the Office of Food and Drug Administration, Mister Raymond Sia.
Mister Chair, before we uh, have the other resource person, may I ask some questions to uh, uh, Director Tan?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes, Honorable Marco, may I go you with your questioning?
Yeah, you, you, in the bills that were filed, you agree that uh, they will exercise quasi judicial function?
Yes, po, uh, sir. Actually, at the present, it has already a quasi judicial function, but it has not yet been really uh, given the proper uh, like procedures as to in the implementation of it because the enforcement part of it is lacking.
So there will be also a situation that they might not exercise this because uh, of the problem with the organization uh, that will be established, just in case. Because you have right now the quasi judicial function and you don't exercise and therefore uh, it's, it's not a question of the provision, it's a question of the implementation of the body that is authorized to exercise such uh, quasi judicial function.
Uh, actually, sir, it is being exercised now. There is an appeal and uh, a proper appeal to the Secretary of Health from the regions. However, the, in terms of the proper, you, we call, you parang ano niya, sir, how much they will be, it is not implemented, it is not uh, stated on the old bill, the nineteen sixty-five, the 4226, is not explicitly uh, stated there because in terms of the amount also, sir, it's already different if you would compare the nineteen sixty-five to twenty twenty-two. So in terms also of the regional, because we have already decentralized some of the functions from the central office to the regional health office. Now in terms of whenever they have decisions, it will be appealed to the central office yet. So since the regional health office is under the regional director yet, there is uh, some uh, parang nag squabble in terms of decisions, sir, because they are not yet directly under to us. So this bill will already correct and will have a, a better implementation in terms of the implementation with quasi judicial function.
So what you're saying here is uh, the regional directors will not get involved anymore in the supervision and control of the different health facilities, but instead it will be the bureau?
Yes, po.
So you want to centralize the function?
Yes.
Under this particular bill?
Yes, po.
And the reason why you cannot do this right now in terms of supervision and control is because you have to follow certain regulation in terms of the involvement of the regional offices?
Exactly, po, sir.
Okay, but will you agree with me if I put an amendment to this provision on the exercise of the quasi judicial function? To be in uh, in coordination or with the sort of explicit approval of the Secretary of Health?
Yes, po.
So that from the beginning, uh, you will not have any more problem of the bureaucracy because the one who will conquer already in the exercise of your judicial function, quasi judicial function is the Secretary of Health?
Yeah, uh, there will be no more uh, a room for appeal, sir, if that could be the case.
No, no, there is always a room for appeal. If you decide to close a facility, may, dapat you follow first due process. You don't just uh,
Exactly.
Close, no? And there is a provision in the bill that there is uh, so-called mandatory conciliation and uh, mediation.
Noted, yes, po.
So that is a requirement that before you close a facility, uh, whatever, for whatever reason, whether valid or not, you have to follow first. Kailangan meron muna ang conciliation. You ask them why you have not complied?
Yes, po.
And you find ways and means so that you will not affect the, the customers, if you may, of this hospital?
Yes, po.
Uh, you have to do all this?
Yes.
Hindi yung gusto nyong isara, isasara nyong?
It's not like you, you are abuse of, we, we abuse any power in the uh, regulating any health facilities. It's always, there's always a due process as it is stated under the constitution as well, sir.
Eh, kanina, iba yung sinabi mo eh.
I know, sir, because, sir, and he pinasok now, sir.
So you agree that uh, this uh, exercise of quasi judicial function will be uh, in coordination or with the approval of the Secretary of Health?
Yes, po.
Oh, and you have to follow yung conciliation and mediation prior to closure?
Yes.
Kasi pag nagclose ka, hindi lang ang uh, hospital ang maapektuhan o yung facility, kundi yung mga pasiente na pumupunta dun sa hospital.
Inoconsider po, lahat, lahat 'yan toong, resmen.
Okay, sige. I just want to get the approval of this uh, of the secret, of the director of uh, ano?
Health facilities, sir.
Head ng health facility?
Yes, po.
Kaya pala gusto nyong maging bureau?
Ay, hindi, sir.
Ah, hindi ha? Okay, sige, hindi.
For the record, sir, actually.
Hindi, hindi po yun.
Director, I'm here last year lang and kahapon lang po ako naging OIC.
Ah, okay, sige po. Maraming po salamat. Thank you, Mister Chair.
And other comments from the members of the House? So we'll proceed with uh, the resource persons. But before we proceed, we'd like to recognize the presence of uh, via Zoom by Honorable Mi Dico, Honorable James Jojo Ang, Honorable Gerardo Jerry Boy Espina, Honorable Eleonor Bolut Begtang, Honorable Carl Nicolas Carey, Honorable Ron Salo. So uh,
Mister Chair?
Yeah. Yes, Honorable Marco?
Mister Chair, I have uh, two meetings apro, and, and the Committee on Justice. If I may make a motion already at this point, anyway, this bill has been tackled and approved during the Eighteenth Congress and we have uh, heard our Director, uh, Director Tan for uh, uh, her manifestation and support to the bill, if I may be allowed, Mister Chair?
Yes, of course, you're, you may do so.
May I be recognized?
Yes, Honorable Plato?
Commissman uh, Marco? Meron din po ako, dalawa rin po ako. Yes, I save your word.
Yeah, you may, appreciate with your state.
Where you go? Republic Act uh, 4226, the Hospital Licenseure Act was enacted in nineteen sixty-five, fifty-eight years ago. It is only but timely that actions be taken to modernize the regulation of the health facilities to the amendment of the Republic Act. The medical field is constantly evolving and expanding with the technological advancement to consider. Some benefits of technology in the healthcare and medical field include precision and efficiency in medical treatments. Medical apparatus, machineries and equipment have drastically improved. Yet sadly, our medical situation seems to adapt very slowly. Sana po, madami tayong natutunan sa ating pinagdaanan ng panahon ng kasagsagan ng COVID-nineteen dito sa ating bansa. Marami ang naospital at marami ang binawahan, binawihan ng buhay. Maraming pamilya ang nahulila sa kanilang mga mahal sa buhay. Mister Chair, realize the importance of access to medical care and availability of hospitals and healthcare resources that are suited to treat sickness and viruses. It is important time to review Republic Act 4226 and amend it accordingly. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you so much, Honorable Salvador Plato. Honorable Marco, with your motion?
Yeah, uh, yes, Mister Chair, considering that there are five bills uh, on the same subject. House Bills 265, 2645, 3040, 4152 and 4242, uh, I would like to move, uh, Mister Chair, that we consolidate the five bills and use uh, the bill that was approved during the Eighteenth Congress as the lead bill and also move uh, that we approve uh, the uh, lead bill, uh, as I stated, uh, that was approved on the Eighteenth Congress and with one amendment that uh, in the exercise of the judicial function of the Bureau of Health Facility, uh, it should be with the concurrence of the Secretary of Health instead of simply the Bureau. After all, uh, this is a very important function that will be exercised and we need uh, the concurrence of the Secretary of Health uh, in the exercise of this quasi judicial function, Mister Chair. I so move.
Second, the motion, Mister Chair.
Any objection? There being now with the motion duly seconded, the modernizing, the Act Modernizing the Regulation of Health Facilities and Services and Appropriating Funds Therefore, repealing for the purpose Republic Act Number 4226, otherwise known as the Hospital Licenseure Act is hereby approved. Subject to a style and amendments.
I have no objection.
Congratulations.
And thank you. Thank you, Chair. Uh, as, because it's uh, all local bills now, may I also be excused?
Yes, uh, after this, we'll tackle all, all local bills and uh, I know you are all busy, we are all busy. We understand your predicament and plight. Thank you so much for your presence.
Thank you, Chair.
So let's, let us proceed with our resource persons. And uh, for the record, we would like to recognize uh, the representative from Food and Drug Administration, Attorney Gwain Emil Cabrera.
Good morning, Mister Chair and sa committee members, po. Uh, I apologize, but at this point, po, may we request, po, that we be given additional time to consolidate our position on the uh, House Bills, po. This matter was recently just given to us, po. Eh, we will, uh, we can also meet, po, in, uh, at the soonest possible time, uh, through the usual chance for yung bagging position paper.
Okay, uh, we hear the position of FDA. So uh, we'll wait for your uh, consolidation of your position paper.
Thank you, Mr.
So uh, let's go next. So our resource person from the Department of Environment and Natural Resources. May we recognize Mister Kim? Mister Kim J.
Yes, good morning, po.
Good morning. I think there is a technical difficulties at this time. We'll just hear back again uh, in a while, Mister Kim Go, Geo. So we can proceed with the local bills in consideration at this time. I'd like to recognize the authors of the bills one at a time for their sponsorship and the committee shall deliberate and decide on the bills one at a time also. So uh, may I call on Representative Stephen James Tan of House for the House Bill Seven Zero Four One. So uh, Honorable Stephen Tan, send a letter. And um, okay, we will tackle that bill. okay, we will tackle that bill uh in a while. For now, we may call on uh Doctor Melissa Senna for uh as a resource person.
Good morning, Mister Chair. Good morning, Mister Chair, thank you. We, we recognize the intent of House Bill number seven zero four one seeking to establish the Gandara District Hospital as a facility under the supervision and control of the DOH within the municipality of Gandara Summer. However, we express reservation on its establishment as a fa- as a facility under DOH. Considering that there already exists Gandara District Hospital as an infirmary, we recommend its upgrading from an infirmary to either a level one or level two hospital under the supervision and control of the local government unit. This is in compliance with Executive Order Number One Three Eight, Series of Twenty Twenty One. And uh this is also aligned with the design of the served healthcare provider network, which recommends that a province must have at least a level one hospital and a level two or three hospital. Uh please note that the province of Summer has not yet satisfied the number of health facilities to complete its healthcare provider network. Summer is also under the universal healthcare integration site, which aims to attain UHC through a functional healthcare provider network that offers integrated and coordinated healthcare systems. A complete healthcare provider network shall help address the hospital bed gaps of the province and strengthen Summer's HCPN as envisioned in the UHC Act. In view of the foregoing, we recommend changing of the title of the bill into an act upgrading Gandara District Hospital in the municipal, in the municipality of Gandara Province of Summer and appropriating funds therefore. Notwithstanding that the ownership shall remain in the province, the DOH shall still provide support and technical assistance through our Eastern Visayas Center for Health Development. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Doctor Melissa Senna, for the comments as far as that Bill seven zero four zero. Next, would like to recognize Representative Byd Impol Mastura for the House Bill seven three two zero and act increasing the bed capacity of the Cotabato Regional and Medical Center in Cotabato City from six hundred beds, one thousand beds, upgrading its service facilities and professional healthcare services and appropriating funds therefore. Represented by Dipol Mastura, you're recognized. While waiting, we'd like to recognize the presence of our fellow representatives via Zoom, Honorable Maria Vanessa Omentado. Honorable. Okay. Okay, so uh we had a difficulty via Zoom. I may as well sponsor the, the Bill seven three two zero and uh the explanatory note may serve as uh the sponsorship, sponsorship speech. Okay, so uh under this bill, would like to hear our resource person from Cotabato Regional Medical Center, Doctor Ismael Dimarin. Doctor Dimarin?
Yeah, uh, salam alaykum warahmatullahi ta'ala wa barakatuhu. Good morning to our distinguished member of the House of Representatives. And uh thank you for giving us the opportunity to participate in this ano session. And uh as the Medical Center Chief of the Cotabato Regional and Medical Center, uh we would like to thank the uh sponsor of this Bill number seven three twenty by our honorable Congresswoman Byd Impol Mastura. An act of increasing the bed capacity of the Cotabato Regional Medical Center from six hundred bed capacity to one thousand bed capacity, upgrading its ano service facilities and uh professional healthcare services and appropriating funds thereof. So uh the Cotabato Regional and Medical Center are the cut uh the Apex Repairal Center of the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region with the population of almost uh five million, as well as the Region Twelve, the Soc Sergeant, the Central Mindanaw. A total of uh four point eight million population and the Cotabato City, three hundred twenty-four thousand. So uh we really need the ano, the upgrade to one thousand bed capacity. Because uh we have been ano flooded by the ano patients from our neighboring ano areas. And uh uh we must be under the control and supervision of the Department of Health. Our intra are already available for expansion. Uh most of the project will be turnover this year, and the increase in the bed capacity will improve the health services in our catchment area in Central Mindanaw. And it, it will also help our job order, the uh contract of service, service personnel to regularize through the increase of the manpower corresponding to the increase of the bed capacity. So as of today, uh 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 our census for admission last twenty twenty-two is uh uh our admission is uh twenty-six thousand eight hundred five, and our annual discharge is ano twenty-five thousand four hundred twenty. And uh so far uh we are uh we are uh uh identified by the DOH as the multi-specialty center for ano thirteen specialty center, uh like the cardiovascular, uh cancer center, pulmonary, renal, opta, ophthalmology, and uh the ano uh uh tropical medicine and the geriatrics, pulmonology. So we really need this ano upgrade. As of now, we have a, a total of uh eight hundred eighty-seven ano bed capacity. And we are operating now as ano uh five hundred seventy-five bed capacity. So we are hoping praying that this bill will pass so that we can uh 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 we can uh meet our goal. The, to provide the quality healthcare services to our stakeholders and uh our cli- clients. So uh we have a total of one thousand two hundred twenty-two regular ano employees. And we have a job order of uh almost nine hundred. So we really need the upgrade so that we can help our ano job orders to be ano uh permanently ano uh employed in our institution. So Cotabato Regional Medical Center is the only Apex Repairal here in uh Bangsa Moro and Soc Sergeant area and identify as a Apex Repairal Center and uh it is in consonance with the implementation of the universal healthcare system. So sana po matulungan niyo po kami. Uh we are uh in public service. Uh uh, nas ano kayo, uh, uh, legislation, and we are in the ano health sector. So uh we really need you to fund our ano uh hospital. So thank you very much for giving us time to uh uh hear our side. So thank you and uh wassalam.
Thank you, sir. At this point, we may call on Doctor Melissa Senna for the comments as far as the DOH is concerned.
Thank you, Mister Chair. The Department of Health fully supports the proposed upgrading and increase in bed capacity of the Cotabato Regional and Medical Center. CRMC is now operating at a bed occupancy rate of one hundred twenty-six percent. This is well beyond the ideal of eighty to eighty-five percent bed occupancy rate. Uh moreover, the hospital is uh targeted to deliver specialty services. It shall have fourteen specialty centers as mentioned by the Medical Center Chief. It shall be the Apex Referal for cardiovascular care, renal care and transplant and lung care and others uh to serve the population in Mindanaw. In view of the foregoing, we pose no objection to the proposed upgrading and increase in bed capacity of the Cotabato Regional Medical Center from six hundred to one thousand beds. We also recommend that the hospital development plan shall reflect the increase in bed capacity and should also be aligned with the Philippine Health Facility Development Plan. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Doctora Senna. We'd like to recognize the physical presence of Honorable Zia Alonto Adyong from Lanau del Sur. And via Zoom, the presence of Representative Joseph Jojo Lar and Representative Rodolfo Umpong Ordanes. Also, the presence via Zoom by Honorable Mary Mitzi Kahayung Uy. So let's proceed with the House Bill seven four three one. I'd like to recognize Representative Zia Alonto Adyong for the an act increasing the bed capacity of the Amay Pakpak Medical Center from four hundred beds to eight hundred beds, upgrading its service facilities and professional healthcare services, authorizing the increase of its medical workforce complement and appropriating funds therefore. Honorable uh Zia, Dung?
Allahumma, in shaytanir regimes, sallamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wa barakatuhu. Uh, good morning, everyone. Uh, first of all, I'd like to pay my respect to the acting chairperson of this committee, uh Chairperson Miguel, and of course, the members of this committee who are present both online and physically. And I'd like to thank also our resource persons for being us here today, this morning, to tackle very important measures uh that are pending in this honorable committee. Uh, first of all, Mister Chair, I would like to thank the committee for scheduling the deliberation of House Bill number seven four two one or an act increasing the bed capacity of the Maypakpak Medical Center from its current four hundred bed capacity to eight hundred bed capacity, upgrading its service facilities and professional healthcare services, authorizing the increase of its medical workforce complement and appropriating funds therefore. The Amaypakpak Medical Center, Mister Chair in Marawi City, has a storied past dating back to its origin as an army construct, army hospital constructed by the American forces in nineteen oh three. By nineteen ten, it had become the twenty-five bed capacity Lanau General Hospital before being renamed as the Amaypakpak General Hospital in nineteen seventy to honor our local Maranau hero, Tatu Akadir Akubar Amaypakpak, who pushed, who fought in the nineteen nine, in eighteen ninety-five Battle of Marawi in order to push back the advancement of the Spanish incursion in our area. It was then in nineteen ninety-five, Mister Chair, and thanks to the tireless efforts of my late father, when he was then the congressman of my represent of the district which I represent today, uh late Congressman Numental uh M. Adyong Senior, that the hospital was nationalized and converted into medical center. Over the years, then the hospital has undergone several upgrades to enhance its services, culminating in a major renovation in two thousand and eighteen that raised the bed capacity to four hundred and earned it a license as a level three medical facility in twenty twenty by virtue of a bill and which was enacted into laws authored by my former, the former Congressman Ansarudin Alontodoyong, who's also a brother. Despite the many challenges it has faced, the Amaypakpak Medical Center has proved itself to be a resilient institution. In two thousand and six, a fire destroyed the original building, but the hospital was rebuilt and restored to even greater capa- capabilities by twenty-eight, two thousand and eight, showcasing the indomitable spirit of the Maranau people. During the two thousand and seventeen Marawi siege, armed men invaded the hospital's premises, but several personnel remained on duty until the Philippine military secured the area. And during the COVID-nineteen pandemic, or at the height of the COVID-nineteen pandemic lockdown, the hospital faced another battle, this time against the ravages of a disease. Nonetheless, APMC played a crucial role in the COVID-nineteen response in the province and the neighboring areas, with its personnel working tirelessly to save lives despite the, despite the risks. Through all of these hardships, ma'am Mister Chair, the APMC has remained steadfast in its commitment to providing essential medical care in times of crisis, both natural and mad-made calamities. The Amaypakpak Medical Center is the only level-three hospital in the province, serving a population of one million one hundred ninety-five thousand five hundred eighteen and clients from the neighboring provinces of Northern Mindanaw, uh in the Barm, and as well as down south, Mister Chair. As level, uh as, as a level-three hospital, APMC provides comprehensive medical services ranging from emergency and outpatient care to intensive care, dialysis, and rehabilitative care. In addition, APMC, Mister Chair, offers clinical laboratory and radiology services as well as maintain, maintaining a blood bank. Under the Department of Health, or Department Order Number One, Series of Twenty Twenty One, APMC has been designated with nine basic comprehensive specialty centers, including cardiovascular care, lung care, orthopedic care, physical rehabilitation medicine, mental health care, neonatal care, infectious diseases and tropical medicine, eye care, and dermatology care. This means, Mister Chair, that APMC is being tasked by the department to be the hospital of last resort at the regional level, and it will also serve as a center for medical training and research. As the only hospital in, but in the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in most, in Muslim Mindanaw, with this designation, the APMC requires Mister Chair's support to attain such lofty goals. This bill proposes to double APMC's bed capacity for four hundred to eight hundred bed capacity, thereby increasing the number of people who can safely cared for the, for by the, by the facility. It also aims to increase APMC's workforce, facilities, and services, creating more jobs for healthcare workers and improving the quality of healthcare services not only for the constituents of my province, but those of nearby provinces, Mister Chair. By passing this bill, we help Lanau del Sur in its neighboring areas and all the provinces as mentioned, Mister Chair, in Northern Mindanaw, even in Barm, and uh the, 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 the acting chair with the, definitely with the know-how uh APMC also caters as constituent constituents as far as again the Oro and perhaps in Bukidnon, which uh one of the districts he represents. So for this reason, Mister Chair, we had the steadfast in our optimism and that the, the committee, the honorable committee uh would be able to approve and transmit this bill to the plenary for its immediate inaction, Mister Chair. As such, the approval of this bill is earnestly sought. Thank you very much. Salamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wa barakatuhu. Thank you very much. Salamualaikum warahmatullahi taala wa barakatuhu. Magandang umaga po sa ating lahat.
Thank you very much, Representative Zia Alonto Adyong. We shall proceed with the resource person, but before that, we'd like to recognize the presence via Zoom by, uh, the presence of Honorable Bydimpol Mastura, as well as we recognize officially the presence of Congressman Rowell Peter Godzaga. So, let us hear at this point, um, the Director of Amay Pacpac Medical Center, Doctor Shalimar Rakin.
Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi taala wa barakatuhu. My courtesy to the Chairman and members of the Committee on Health and of course, to our very own, uh, First District Congressman, Congressman Zia Adyong. Um, thank you for this opportunity. There is a need to upgrade the Amay Pacpac Medical Center from four hundred to eight hundred bed capacity because, as, uh, Congressman Adyong mentioned, that it is the only level-three medical center in the Lanau Provinces, uh, with the capacity of providing basic to advanced comprehensive healthcare services. In reiteration, the province of Lanau del Sur was once the poorest province in the country with a poverty incidence of seventy-one point two. Um, only APMC is up, once APMC is upgraded into eight hundred bed capacity, the pressing problem about exceedingly high bed occupancy rate will be resolved. There will be enough manpower to manage and provide quality care to patients. Compassion fatigue among healthcare providers can be avoided redounding to the mental and physical well-being of the APMC employees. As I speak now, our latest bed occupancy rate is one hundred twenty-five percent uh, against the ideal of eighty to eighty-five percent. So, once it exceeds the ideal eighty-five percent, uh, there will be problem with the quality of services. Uh, and also, uh, we have a total of one thousand one hundred, uh, plantilla item to take care of the four hundred, uh, bed, uh, capacity hospital patients. And, uh, right now, we have to hire job orders and contractuals totaling, uh, of more than three hundred fifty, uh, employees uh, just to augment the increasing number of, uh, patient at Amay Pacpac Medical Center. We are one of the, uh, six apex hospital of Mindanao and as mentioned earlier, that we are mandated to establish nine, uh, subspecialty centers. And also, we have our own initiative, uh, multi-specialty center to add to the auto center rehab, heart, lung care, neonatal, mental health, infectious diseases, eye center, derma. We are also establishing renal, trauma and cancer center. And among the, uh, twelve, uh, subspecialty centers, uh, seven are already established as I speak now. So, we are working on the, uh, four other, uh, subspecialty centers. Um, so, we hope that, uh, as an upgraded apex hospital in the region with multi-specialty centers, the population of Lanau Provinces and the nearby provinces will become healthier, better health outcomes because complex clinical cases can be managed and treated properly as the hospital is fortified with, uh, competent health workers and state-of-the-art equipment and facilities to make it more responsive to health system. Indigent patients are protected from out-of-pocket expenditures and impoverishment that will be, uh, the equitable healthcare financing by broadening their health benefit, coverage and equitable use of funds. Finally, a state of physical and mental well-being will be experienced by the people of Lanau Provinces and nearby places. Thank you po.
Thank you, Dr. Rakin. For the side of Health Facility Development Bureau, let us hear and recognize Dr. Melissa Senna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Department of Health supports the proposed upgrading and increase in bed capacity of the Amay Pacpac Medical Center. As mentioned earlier, APMC is envisioned to be upgraded to deliver, uh, to have nine specialty centers. And also, we have to consider that there, the gap for level-three hospital beds in the region in Barm is two thousand one hundred fifty beds by year twenty twenty-five. Therefore, the increase in bed capacity and also the upgrading of its service capability is warranted. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much, Dr. Melissa Senna. So, uh, let's proceed with the next, uh, item and that is the House Bill seven six four four entitled an act renaming Doctor Jose and Rodriguez Memorial Hospital in the city of Caloocan into Jose Rodriguez Memorial Medical Center and appropriating funds therefore, mending for the purpose patas pambansa Pilang ninety-four entitled an act renaming the Central Zone Sanitarium at Tala, city of Caloocan as Doctor Jose and Rodriguez Memorial Hospital. So, let us acknowledge the presence of Representative Oscar Malapita. And there's a letter, uh, of him. So, uh, may as well sponsor this bill and let, uh, the explanatory notes be my sponsorship speech. So, we recognize Doctor Eric John Capito of, uh, Doctor Jose and Rodriguez Memorial Medical Center.
Honorable Chair and the Member of, uh, Committee on Health, good morning. Our institution believe that, uh, being a medical center implies that a health facility offers complete health services from the basic to the most complex one. To be renamed as a medical center will allow us to promote our services to a wider market as it offers or it is our intention to attract more customers from all walks of life. And it is also aligned with the strategic goal of our institution to be a multi-specialty center in our catchment area. That's all and thank you.
Again, for the side of DOH, Dr. Melissa Senna, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The DOH interposes no objection to the proposed remaining of the Jose and Rodriguez Memorial Hospital into Jose Rodriguez Memorial Medical Center. However, we, we recommend adding a provision that states provision in other laws which make reference to Doctor Jose and Rodriguez Memorial Hospital such as those providing for increases in bed capacity, budgetary allocation or other rights and privileges shall continue to apply after the effectiveness of the act. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much, Dr. Melissa Senna, for your comments. So, uh, with all the House Bills tackled, uh, namely, House Bill, um, seven four three one, House Bill seven six four four, House Bill seven three two zero, House Bill seven zero four one. Do I hear a motion for approval?
Mr. Chair, uh-
Honorable, uh, Zia Adyong?
Mr. Chair, uh, having heard the comments, uh, from the DOH and having no, uh, having interposed no objection, I believe DOH is, uh, very much supportive of all the local bills that were mentioned, uh, today, Mr. Chair. So, I would like to move for an omnibus approval of the four local bills in the agenda, namely, House Bill number seven oh four one, House Bill number seven three two zero, House Bill seven four three one, uh, and House Bill number seven six four four, Mr. Chair. So moved, Mr. Chair, for this, uh, omnibus approval.
There's a motion for the omnibus, omnibus approval of the, of the four bills, uh, just discussed a while ago and is duly seconded, having their, having no objection. So, uh, the omnibus approval of the four bills is approved. Thank you very much. Congratulations. So, uh, are there any other matters?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like, just a quick, a brief, uh, comment, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Honorable Zia Adyong.
First of all, I'd like to congratulate all our hospital administrators who are here. We would like to thank DOH for your support. Uh, this would not have been possible without, of course, uh, Vice Chair, um, Peter Miguel, uh, and, uh, again, I would like on, as one of the authors of this, one of the local bills, I'd like to thank this committee for, uh, this, for, uh, for, for calendaring this agenda, I mean, the bill, uh, and for the approval, immediate approval of the upgrading of Amay Pacpac Medical Center. So, uh, thank you very much. On behalf of my constituency, I'd like to extend my, my thanks to the Chair, Jungato, and of course, to the Vice Chair, Miguel. Thank you very much for, Mr. Chair.
Thank you also for the recognition. So, having no matters anymore to be discussed, do I hear a motion for adjournment?
Mr. Chair, I move that we adjourn.
On motion duly is seconded and there's be, there being no other matters to be discussed, this meeting is now formally adjourned. Thank you very much.